City Council Meeting. And for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, honorable City Council members, to our Chief of Staff, our City Attorney, administrative staff in the audience, our audience here in City Hall, and our viewing audience on the broadcast channel. Welcome to the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Monday, August the 9th, 2021. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so under the Public Comment portion of the agenda. Please fill out the Request to Speak Public Comment Card located on the table in the back of the chambers and hand it to me, the Deputy Clerk. Additionally, members of the public who are viewing tonight's meeting via our broadcast channel can submit their comments to publiccomment@romulusgov.com. And now, Mr. Chair, we will have roll call. Councilwoman Abdo.
Here.
Councilman Barden.
Here.
Councilwoman Roscoe.
Here.
Councilwoman Tally.
Here.
Councilman Wadsworth.
Here.
Councilwoman Webb.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum for tonight's meeting.
Great, thank you.
And now it will be the reading of the agenda. Agenda Item 1, Agenda Number 2 Minutes, Number 3 Petitioner, Number 4 Chairperson's Report, Number 5 Mayor's Report, Number 6 Clerk's Report, Number 7 Treasurer's Report, Number 8 Public Comment, Number 9 Unfinished Business, Number 10 News Business, Number 11 Warrant, Number 12 Communications, and Number 13 Is Adjournment and a Motion Will Be in Order to Accept Tonight's Agenda as Presented.
So moved to accept the agenda as presented. Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Abdo, for approval of the agenda as presented. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Agenda Item 2A is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on Monday, August the 2nd, 2021, at 7:30 PM.
So moved for the meeting of the 2nd of August at 7:30.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Webb, for approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on Monday, August 2nd, at 7:30. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Tally?
Here.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. Motion approved.
Agenda Item 2B is approval of the minutes from the Special Meeting Studies Session held on Monday, August the 2nd, 2021, at 6:30 PM to discuss cemetery rules and regulations.
So moved for approval of the special meeting minutes.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for approval of the minutes from the Special Meeting Studies Session held on Monday, August the 2nd, at 6:30 PM to discuss cemetery rules and regulations. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Subsaying.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are no petitioners for tonight's meeting, and that will move us to Agenda Item Number 4, which is the Chairperson's Report.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk. There was no study session or special meetings tonight. I do like to pass on some information. There was a great golf outing today at Gateway. Some elected officials attended. It was Councilwoman Webb, Councilwoman Abdo, Councilwoman Tally, Treasurer Paige, City Clerk Bragg, all attended, supporting the cause of this great event. Around $10,000 was raised. And they're going to donate that to the new weight room and conditioning room in the high school. And another thing that my surprise is, I won four rounds of golf. And they teach me, he's not even gonna play no golf. So I'm gonna do, I'm going to donate my four rounds of golf to relay for life.
All right.
And I think that our superintendent, Benjamin Edmondson, doing a great job at the community school districts, most responsible for this event, along with a lot of other people. And it's just nice to see the city and schools getting along and to make our city a better place to live and work in. With that, that's gonna conclude the Chairperson's Report. You have something to say?
If I could, I would like a memorial resolution for Joey Crowe.
Support.
And I'll expand on it. Joey was a, Joey was a, he was a grandson of John and Sharon Crowe. And last Thursday, suddenly the Lord reached down and took him, and he was only 20 years old. And it was very, very sad. I was at the funeral home today. The funeral will be buried tomorrow, but his dad was also named Joey Crowe, who was the grandson of the original Joe Crowe in his town. And I'll tell you, there's a difference between going to a funeral for a 90-year-old person or going to funeral for a young fellow that had so much life left. But sometimes the Lord just works in strange ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wadsworth.
I'll support that.
Any other comments? Okay. There's no more other comments? We're gonna need a second?
I supported that.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for a memorial resolution. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. Motion approved. That concludes the Chairperson's Report.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept your report.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the Chairperson's Report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. Motion approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are moving to Agenda Item Number 5, the Mayor's Report, and speaking on behalf of the Mayor, via his Chief of Staff.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you, Deputy Clerk. Before I get started with the Mayor's Report this evening, he did ask me to send some birthday wishes out. We have some more birthdays this week. Councilwoman Abdo will be celebrating a birthday, and also our City Treasurer, Stacy Page. So he asked me to extend his well wishes and happy birthday. The first item on the Mayor's Report this evening, Item Number 5A, is a request for a no-fee permit, and that is from First Baptist Church. And that would be to use the Elmer Johnson's Park Pavilion on August 14th for their annual Family and Fun Day.
Up through the Chair, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Webb.
Before I make the motion, I see that we do have Deacon Willie Colfield here, if he would like to speak on this before we make the motion.
94 years old this year. Our biggest one in this side of Romulus, says, "Community of the other end." Remember that as well, growing up. However, Reverend Wilbers was our pastor for over 50-something years, as you very well know, most of y'all know him. So now we got Reverend Reverend Tree, who is doing a fabulous job. So, yes, we ask him because the community, you know, it's just a busy thing, busy church in this area. We have a field home going today. Right now, we got Bible class going on, which I'm here instead of there. But anyway, we request this report, I mean, request this no-fee. Hopefully, it's the beginning of the new era, trying to seemingly bring people back out because everybody kind of like stuck in the house, and I'm, and I'm used to being stuck in the house. And we want to just do this this year. At one time, we're talking about maybe waiting enough, said, "No, no, we're not gonna wait. We're gonna go ahead and get something started." So we requesting this no-fee. Thank you on that.
Thank you, Deacon Colfield. I would like to make the motion to concur with the administration and authorize a no-fee permit for the First Baptist Church to use the Elmer Johnson's Park Pavilion on August 14th, 2021, for their annual Family and Fun Day.
Support.
Motion by Mrs. Webb, supported by Ms. Williams, for a no-fee permit for First Baptist Church. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. And motion is approved. Thank you, Mr. Colfield.
And you may go back to Bible study.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. The next item on the Mayor's Agenda this evening is Item Number 5B, and that is a request to approve the five-year lease purchase agreement from Chelmerica Leasing. The motion with your support would be to concur with the administration and grant authorization for the mayor and clerk to enter into the lease purchase agreement with Chelmerica Leasing for the lease purchase of a dump body to be installed on a 2021 Freightliner 108SD dump chassis in the amount of $94,605 at a fixed rate of 2.18% for five years, with the first payment to be made on or about January 15th, 2022. And if you recall, City Council did take action to approve this actual, the purchase back in January of this year, and the resolution numbers attached.
Through the Chair?
Yes, Ms. Webb.
I'd like to make that motion to concur with the administration and grant the authorization.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for purchase agreement, commercial leasing, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Roll call vote? Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, Council. The next item, Item Number 5C, and that is a request to introduce Budget Amendment 2122-4. And with your concurrence would be a motion to concur with the administration, introduce Budget Amendment 2122-4 to purchase a security gate at the employee-only lot for the new 34th District Court Building. Gate must be electronic and accessible through a card reader.
Um, are you done?
I'm done, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we approve the introduction of Budget Amendment 21/22-4 for the Court Construction Fund.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Abdo, for introduction of Budget Amendment 21/22-4 Court Construction Fund. Any discussion?
I just have one thing to say.
Okay.
Excuse my voice, I'm having a little throat problems. This $16,000 for this electronic gate is coming out of the Court Fund.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none? Roll call vote? Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
I figured as much.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, Council. And the next item is introduction of Budget Amendment 21-22-5. And this is a request that was submitted through our Financial Services Department. And this, with your concurrence, would be to introduce Budget Amendment for supplies for incoming council that were included in the Footnote section of the budget that you reviewed during our budget review process and approved, but not carried over to the actual line item as intended.
Read the motion.
Up through the Chair, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Ms. Webb? Supported by Mr. Wadsworth. Been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Mr. Wadsworth, for introduction of Budget Amendment 21/22-5, City Council. Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Through the Chair.
Yes. On page 66, up under Fund Balance 010039000. It's stating the current balance. Is this the council balance that is $6,672? Is that the general fund balance?
No, this is the fund balance for the council supply account.
It's not $6 million. That shouldn't be.
Is it $6 million?
It's not $6 million.
It's $6,000. Yeah, it's not $6 million.
I think that's a...
It's $6,000.
Yeah. It must be a mistake. So I just want to make sure we correct that because it's reading $6 million.
I think it's how they round out a lot of times when they're doing the budget.
Just so I vote on it, I mean, I agree on it, but I just want to make sure that we're not agreeing on the balance is $6 million.
A lot of office supplies, no.
I think what it is, is they've rounded it out that last three digits, to three digits, instead of two. Because there is a decimal.
Doesn't matter what happened, I just want to make sure it's corrected.
It's reading $6,000. It's just that that's a decimal, not a comma.
Not a comma, correct.
There's not a comma there, but it's a comma after the other one, so.
Yeah, it's 6, comma, 685 decimal. So that's where we get the $6,000 from. Instead of 03, for some reason, it went to 033, which...
The way I read it, I was asking the...
It does look that way.
Let's just make sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I don't have a problem with it. I just want to make sure if we got $6 million in our account, now I got a conversation for other members.
We all do.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
No $6 million.
Been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Mr. Wadsworth. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, City Council. That will conclude the Mayor's Report for this evening.
Thank you, Chief of Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chief of Staff. Our next agenda item is Agenda Item 6, the Clerk's Report. There are two action items under the Clerk's Report, but before I go into the Clerk's Report and into the action items, I do want to make an acknowledgement. We learned last week that our Clerk, Clerk Bragg, she is the recipient of the 2021 Michigan Association of Municipal Clerk Clerk of the Year, which is a very prestigious award. She has been recognized by her counterparts in other municipalities and her peers as someone who is a great asset and a contributor to the clerking world and the clerking profession. I think a congratulations is definitely in order for an honor well deserved.
Yes.
Yes, well deserved.
So, congratulations, Clerk Bragg, if you are watching. Item 6A is second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment 2122-2 in the amount of $5,000 to transfer funds to pay for the expenditures associated with the installation of brick pavers in the cemetery around the Veterans Memorial Monument. This amendment was introduced at the August 2nd, 2021, regular council meeting.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion for second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment 21/22-2 in the amount of $5,000 to transfer funds to pay for the installation of the brick pavers at the Veterans Memorial.
Support.
The motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Roscoe, second reading, final adoption of Budget Amendment 21/22-2. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Roll call vote? Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, City Council. The next is Agenda Item 6B, and it's the approval recommendation from the Property Disposition Committee. The Property Disposition Committee met on August the 4th, and they concur with the following recommendation, and that recommendation is now being forwarded to the full council. And it is for the council to concur with the recommendation of the Property Disposition Committee and to designate for sale and let out for bid the property with parcel ID 80-03999001706 and parcel ID 80-040-99-0002713.
Through the Chair?
Yes, Ms. Webb.
I'd like to make that motion to approve the recommendation from our Property Disposition Committee for the parcels as read.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Tally, for the Property Disposition Committee recommendations, which was read by parcel IDs. Any discussion?
Yes. I would like to note, this, these two particular parcels, did the city own them? These properties? These parcels?
Currently, unfortunately, we do not have any representative of the Property Disposition Committee currently here at tonight's meeting, so I can't, and I don't want to give any type of false impression or false information to council. I'm not aware or familiar with what was discussed at the Property Disposition Committee. If the council would like and would like more information, we can table it and bring this back up as another action item for next council meeting.
Well, I was just wondering, you know, because I wasn't aware that the city still owned property or parcels. And another thing, I was surprised to see that North Point notified Ms. Alberts, and this is the first time I've ever seen it, that they were interested in that property, knowing that it's going out to bid. So I just want to make sure with this bidding process that it actually goes out to bid and it's fair. And these are questions I called earlier, but I couldn't get any answers. And, you know, will this property be also available for residents to bid on or just businesses? I see that small parcel out of there.
If you don't mind, Ms. Williams, where this is, these are these old roads that used to go through here, and the city does own them, and that's why they're vacating them and why they're gonna sell them.
So you're gonna...
And that's the questions that I got answered earlier today.
So they're vac, the city is vacating?
They have been.
They have already been vacated?
They're old roads, yeah. If you look on here, it says vacated. These roads are no longer used, these two roads, and so they're putting them up for bid to get rid of them. Yeah, Benoy, all the way through, and they go right through the middle of those properties.
Like I said, I was just concerned to see that North Point said, because I know they have other properties, and I'm not for sure if this property is connected or close to their property.
I believe it is.
So I was concerned because I've never seen it where they would notify our assessor to say that they're interested, knowing that it's going out to bid, whether they're interested or not. I thought it would have been better for them to just wait till it go out to bid and then, you know, bid on it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Abdo?
Is this something we could possibly delay till we have someone from the Property Disposition Committee here to explain why now they're selling it as opposed to...
I'm not concerned about why now they're selling it.
Well, I, they could answer all of the questions. How's that sound?
I think it's just a process they go through.
Yeah. But if there's questions, we've got to get them answered.
Up through the Chair, if I may?
Ms. Webb?
If Ms. Williams doesn't have any other questions, I understand, I guess I'm thinking of, okay, it's a long stretch, Rafferty Road, that's a long stretch. It's narrow, I mean, it's not too big. If you wanted to, say, vacate from behind your house, you know, we have a lot of vacations, then, you know, you have to get maybe signatures from your neighbors, et cetera, but since this is zoned totally different, you know, for the businesses, so, and we know that North Point does, you know, we know what their plans are. So I guess they just wanted the assessor's office to know that they are interested in that vacated property, but the council is gonna vote tonight or whenever to let it forbid. Then that way, if somebody else wants to purchase that property... Right, I understand that, and thank you, Councilwoman Webb. I was just saying, I had never seen where the developer, I'm very familiar with North Point, but I haven't seen where they let us know in advance, knowing that it's going up for sale and then out for bid.
Yeah, neither have I.
I thought maybe it would have been a little bit more fair that they would wait till it go out to bid and then, you know, notify, and then be a part of the bid instead of, with what has already happened, I just don't want to make, I want to make sure I'm not jumping the gun and giving someone else, you know, heads up versus it being opened. Because even though it's next to their property, it's, the property is vacated, maybe someone else won it. We don't know, but I was just shocked when I seen the letter attached to... Yeah, I was, I was, I was sort of surprised as well for someone to inform the assessor's office that they, they're interested, but also it's recovered by us, the seven legislative bodies, being able to make that motion and say, "We're gonna let this forbid." And then everyone has a chance, whoever wants to do it.
Mr. Wadsworth? Have you finished, Ms. Webb?
And I, and I agree with Mrs. Webb. All that we're doing tonight is setting up the process so this property will be put out for bids. It'll be publicly, you know, it'll be put in the paper, it'll be advertising. Anybody, including businesses or residents, can bid on the property. Am I correct?
And I appreciate everyone's input, but what I'm saying is, I was shocked myself to see that they, even if they notified our assessor, if this hadn't been in the package then, it wouldn't have sent a red flag. I just, I don't agree that they should have notified us that they wanted to purchase it, even though they own the property on each side. It's just kind of like, you trying to tell me something? You want to make, you want me to make sure that I know that you want this property? I mean, to me, it should have been where this came up under the bid process and not before the council, before we put it out to bid. So that's all I'm saying. I just noticed, I had never seen that before, before we sent something out to bid. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, if there's no other comments, a roll call vote? Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
No.
Chair vote, yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, City Council, and that concludes the Clerk's Report.
Thank you, Deputy.
Moving on to, on tonight's agenda is Agenda Item 7, the Treasurer's Report. And Madam Treasurer, she's not present at tonight's meeting, so that will bring us to number eight, Public Comment. This is the portion of the agenda for those in the audience who would like to address City Council. The rules to address City Council can be found on the back of the meeting agenda. If you would like to address City Council, please raise your hand, and after being acknowledged by the Chairperson, approach the podium and state your name. Please note, members of the public who submitted a Public Comment Card will be called upon first. You will have three minutes to speak. Any additional time will be upon the consent of the Chairperson. As a reminder, members of the public viewing tonight's meeting via the city's broadcast channel can submit their public comments to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment period. Mr. Chair, I have not received any public comment cards. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address city council?
Yes, Mr. Miller?
Good evening.
Good evening.
In preference to my opinions and remarks, I make no disparaging accusations of the veracity of individuals I heretofore may mention. My remarks are my opinion. Once again, and I've been before this honorable body more than three times, or two times, more than two times, in regards to this same situation, and I shall continue until, hopefully, we have a resolution. Once again, it is becoming common practice to violate the charter. Section 5.4 on page 12 reads, "In the case of absence or disability of the mayor, the chairman of the council shall perform the duties of the mayor." And it continues on and tells what you are allowed to do or what you're not allowed to do. It is my opinion, the current administration has little confidence in the current mayor pro tem to conduct, excuse me, city business in his absence. This mayor pro tem does not take the mayor's seat, and to my knowledge, never has. It's been held by lawyers, chiefs of staff, department heads in violation of the charter. Now, those present and viewing at home may think this is petty. It is not petty. Let's equate the charter to the Constitution. Both are roadmaps to sound legal policy. We are but a microcosm of the federal government. Failure to abide by its rules have legal consequences. It is my opinion, for the mayor pro tem to not take his seat is a violation of not only the charter, but the mandate of his office. There can be no other conclusion, in my opinion, except they, they being the administration, have no confidence in the mayor pro tem's ability to perform his duties. I do not subscribe to that opinion.
Sir, three minutes. Your three minutes is up. If you would like additional time...
May I ask the council to continue?
There's time, I think that we're going to keep it at three minutes, Mr. Miller.
Mr. Wisworth, may I continue?
I think he could finish his paragraph today.
Ms. Williams, may I continue?
Okay, how many minutes you need, Mr. Miller?
I've got one more page. It's very important, very important. It's important to the citizens, it's important to the city. Thank you, sir. Thank you, madam, thank you, sir. The charter does not speak to who takes his seat if both are missing. It is generally thought the third highest voter gets, takes the position, and so, although it is not codified as such, simply meaning, codification simply meaning not legal. The meeting continues unless a quorum is not established. Under that situation, the meeting must be rescheduled. I think it's in my opinion that if the mayor pro tem is being prevented by some unestablished cause, could possibly turn into a landmark decision, leading us down another legal rabbit hole. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Well, I'm glad that I'm not running for mayor, just chairing this meeting here. If I was interested in running for mayor, I'd be up there. So I'm just going to just do the job of city council president. And I don't remember any mayor pro tem taking the place of the mayor's place in his absence in the 16 years I've been here. So if you want to bring that up now, go back in some history and bring that up too. Thank you. If there's no more comments, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Agenda item nine will be unfinished business. Agenda item 10, new business.
Through the chair, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Webb.
I have a question, just on the delivery. I'm not getting into this, I don't want to. I don't want to get into the correspondence that I received in my box, but this was mailed to us. Does anyone, is anyone familiar with this CLP Consumer Protection Bureau? You know, the one that we just, I just got out of my box. I mean, this isn't up for discussion at all, but I just wanted to know where, who it came from. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could, that may have been something delivered to each of you individually, so it wasn't anything that was received in our office.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Webb.
Is there any more new business? It moves us to number 11, which is approval of warrant 21-15.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we pay warrant 21-15 in the following amounts. General fund, $55,125.71. Major street fund, $20,100.09. Local street fund, $4,157.58. Public safety fund, $30,668.67. Cable DB, $99.99. Mayorman Road Special Assessment, $6,822.33. Street lighting fund, $398.82. Oakwood SAD, $495. Garbage and rubbish collection fund, $20,729.33. 9/11 Service Fund, $1,043.78. Narc forfeiture, $1,360.2. Library fund, $833.56. DDA, $3,806.52. Tifa District 2, $20,498.27. Water and sewer fund, $6,126.09. Motor vehicle, $618,113.24. Technology services, $28,582.21. Retiree insurance benefits, $38,162.42. Property and liability insurance fund, $148,232.45. Revolving fund, $1,620. Current tax, $6,172.50. Delinquent personal property fund, $1,354.4. Payroll fund, $125,844.54. Totalling of all funds, $1,148,347.16.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, to pay warrant number 21-15 for $1,148,347.16. End discussion. Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Excuse me?
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair of votes, yes, motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Agenda item 12 is communications.
Through the chair?
Yes, Ms. Tally.
I just want to comment on, piggyback off your comments about the golf bowling today, which is, I wasn't there for the whole thing, but where I was, the time I was there was very nice and it looked like it was a successful event. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally.
Mr. Chair, if I could, just two quick updates. You guys kind of passed unfinished business, I didn't get to update you. There were two items brought up over the last couple of weeks. One was relative to a tree limb in the cemetery that Ms. Lemon mentioned last week during the study session, and they were to be out there getting that taken care of. It was getting coordination with the chipper. And then the other item was the digital sign downtown, and it's my understanding, it has been verified that it has reset itself and it's correct now on the time. So just wanted to give you those quick updates.
Julie, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is the chipper back in operation, do we know?
It was my understanding that it was to be, yes, should be back operational.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I would just like to inform the residents that we're still at the high school. Every Tuesday from 11 until the distribution is finished, so all is welcome. Thank you.
All right, if there is no more communication, that brings us to agenda item 13, adjournment, and it is 8:10.
So moved.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wisworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for adjournment. Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Webb? Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair of votes, yes, we are adjourned. Thank you.